Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to open this meeting with a salute to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America, considered republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To us, I believe you have the singular pleasure tonight of calling the roll.
My pleasure.
Counselor Edwards.
Here.
Counselor Aruda.
Present.
Counselor Maderas.
Here.
Counselor Durfee.
Here.
Counselor Carroll.
Here.
And Counselor Costa.
Here.
Counselor Bowlin.
Here.
All present. Present and accounted for. And I see that Mrs. Carroll is in the audience this evening. Mrs. Carroll, would you like to come forward, please?
Madam President, before you acknowledge Mrs. Carroll, could I read this into the record of the town that was provided by Cheryl, our head librarian. Mrs. Carroll began working for the Tiverton Library Services on January 12, 1977. She worked for two years at the Union Library and 1979 transferred permanently to the Essex Library where she has been recognized as an integral part of library support staff and has been respected throughout the years by all she served. As a part-time library assistant, Mrs. Carroll is known and recognized throughout the library, community, and beyond for her unique combination of intelligence, excellent service, friendliness, and sense of humor. She has been a positive influence within the library, serving patrons of all ages with a smile. Serving the community, she is -- she was an active volunteer for Meals on Wheels and the Well Baby Clinic. In 1975, Shirley attended Bristol Community College, earning a library science certificate. Throughout her years of employment, she regularly attended meetings, workshops, and state-sponsored conferences, and that enabled her to keep up with the current trends, technologies, and services in the library profession. Shirley Carroll has not only provided this community with exemplary library service for 30 years, but as an employee for the town, she has exhibited the highest standard of performance and competency possible. She has been an invaluable staff member and will be deeply missed, and it is with great pleasure we acknowledge her important contributions, dedicated service to the town of Tiverton. Cheryl's father has been quite ill. I don't think she's in the audience or she would be here tonight.
She's there.
Oh, she's there?
She snuck in.
Oh, she snuck in. So, but I think it's a pleasure to recognize someone who has given 30 years of service, and I know you have something for her, and then we have something for her also.
Shirley, this is presented to you by the Tiverton Town Council, and it formally recognizes your retirement after 30 years of service to the Tiverton Library Services, and is given in grateful recognition of outstanding public service faithfully rendered to the town of Tiverton by order of the Tiverton Town Council.[252.45][252.45](APPLAUSE). So we'll pass that right along.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Carroll, on behalf of the town staff, we'd like to give you some flowers, a little for all you've volunteered.
Okay. Mr. Bowlin, would you kindly read the consent agenda?
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the minutes of the regular council meeting of January 22, 2007, executive session minutes of the council meeting, January 22, 2007, receipt of the minutes from the following boards and commissions: Open Space Commission, School Committee, Waste Water Management Committee, Personnel Board, Tree Commission, and Stonebridge Task Force; correspondence received from the Tiverton Conservation Commission regarding pedestrian crosswalks on Main Road; received from Mr. Joseph Maderas regarding emergency escape routes; referred to Chief -- Fire Chief Lloyd and Howard Passwater Emergency Management Director; received from Mr. Stuart Hardy regarding design standards for commercial and mixed-use development; Tiverton Conservation Commission copy of letter sent to Patriot Company regarding trash pickup; received from Randall and Kathleen Flanagan, 1974, Crandall Road, request investigation of nonconforming use at 409 East Road, referring to zoning official response attached, referred to Town Administrator, tax collector, request approval of abatements on tax sale to town of Tiverton, tax assessor, request approval of abatements, and tax assessor board of review, request approval of abatements; Town Administrator request interdepartmental budget transfer of $4,000 from account 115-1000, plan of salary to account 107-623, planning board office supplies. That's tonight's consent agenda.
Okay, the Town Administrator has advised me that one item has been removed from the consent agenda, and that is--
Removed from the agenda, too.
And yes. The tax collector request approval of abatements, tax sale to town of Tiverton, that is off the consent agenda. I would like to just pull one thing just very briefly, and that's the design standards for commercial and mixed-use development. So, is there anything else?
Yeah, Madam President, I'd like to have A7.
A7? Okay.
Madam President, A2.
Okay. A2 is received of the minutes.
Mr. Maderas, the emergency escape route.
Oh, yes, yes. That's a favorite subject.
That's why I just want to touch base on it.
Okay. Any other removals? Yes?
Yes, Madam Chairman. Randall Flanagan, I'd like you to remove in here by complaint time.
Is removed? Any other removals or withdrawals?
Motion to approve the consent agenda minus the items removed.
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. Motion. Okay, we will now move to the Mr. Maderas regarding the emergency escape route.
Madam President, I just wanted to touch base on this because this one here has come up, not only amongst the council members, but occasionally has come before us, and I know the chief is going to work on this diligently. You know, maybe we can get some kind of communication out to the citizens or something because, you know, for some reason, people just don't get the message on this, that those signs are out there in the event so they can prior to an emergency. And I, you know, and when I saw this on the agenda, I'm like, here it is again. And I know you and Howard, you're going to do something, and I just thought, you know, maybe just get it on the camera again, you know? Hopefully, people see what this is. Those signs are out there in the event that if an emergency is about to happen, that you are supposed to take that if there -- it emerges. Chief, do it. Do your spiel.
Madam President, Counselor, thank you very much for giving me that time. It is a very quick matter. Rhode Island EMA is the organization that has set up the evacuation routes. The misconception is that this is the route that we want everyone to travel along. Everybody knows those that live in Tiverton know exactly how to get to the shelters if they need to. The evacuation routes are designed for those people that come to our community and have absolutely no idea where to go. This is prior to a storm hitting. When the governor declares that a storm is imminent, people are moving to shelters. That is why these signs are put up, to help guide them to find the middle school. They are not designed that once a storm hits, that these are the routes you're going to be going by. At the point the storm hits, we're no longer capable of saving people, we're no longer capable of risking the lives of people to get out and door. This is prior, 24 hours prior to the storm, 18 hours prior to the storm. There has been statements and been articles, I believe last year Rhode Island EMA did a very large project on it, and perhaps again, we should post it again and put that information out. But I have given each counselor a brief description of what these signs are for, and that's why they're up there, prior to, not at the hitting of the storm. Once the storm hits, all bets are off.
Yep.
And again, I apologize for my attire this evening. The crews have just gotten out of the woods. Approximately 10 acres of brush was burning up behind the power plant, so we've been there all day, so my apologies for my attire this evening.
You look terrible. Where's your tie?
I did the car for me this long run.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
We will move on. Yes.
Motion to send Mr. Maderas's letter to the fire chief and to the emergency manager director.
Okay.
We removed it from the consent agenda, so I didn't know if it needed to go that way.
Are you satisfied?
Oh, I'm satisfied, absolutely.
Okay. Next item was the Mr. Hardy letter, and the only reason for my removal to do that is to use that as a segue into what I think is going -- what I think we should do as a council. We should have scheduled a workshop on some current matters that have not been attended to, or we need to understand where things are. And I would like later in the meeting to set a date for such a workshop. Two-fold purpose. One, to look at our goals going out, and two, to catch up on some things that I think are floating out there, that need to be brought down and resolved, and design standards is one of those. So, that was my only point in asking that it would be removed, is just to give a preview of what I think we need to do later in the meeting. So, I'll make a motion that it be received and acknowledged.
Motion to receive the correspondence.
Yes. Second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next item was--
Mr. Flanagan.
Mr. Flanagan.
It's, it is A. I'm sorry, yeah, I get it, and then we cut some things out.
Okay. What are we talking about? Okay, A, yeah.
Madam President. Kathleen and I, Randall Flanagan, 1974 Crandall Road, are asking the council to remove from correspondence, which I'm sorry, so I'll go on from there. We're here tonight to ask for your help from you, as well as the Town Administrator, and of course, the Town Official.
Zoning official.
Zoning official. Take a fresh look, an in-depth look, at our complaint, which, at the very least, is a nonconforming use in an R8 zone in South Tiverton. We have addressed this matter on at least three occasions, both with the Town Administrator and zoning official, with written letters, meetings with both the TA and the zoning official. I, being on a fixed income at this time, possess no financial resources to appeal this zoning board review, which is the edict of Mr. Gareth Ames. This is the only remedy which I have. This is the only remedy that the zoning official has offered us. Also, in my request to have this put on the agenda, there was a mistake made by the Town Clerk's office in the address that was to be discussed tonight. It is not 409 East Road, but in fact, the plot across the street from me, which is, if you have the evidence in front of you, is seen on the addresses, assesses map, as 29 acres, map 5-1, lot 128, lot 4N. Okay? Did you have that, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you. I believe that Mr. Pelletier, aka Tiger Landscaping, is using the SED properly illegally as a low mixing operation, sometimes known as a pit. And he's manufacturing SED products and sells them in violation of the town ordinances, which I have given you. 18-wheel dump trucks are seen going in and out of the property on a regular basis, which in effect is creating a nuisance. These 18-wheel dump trucks, by the way, some of which are coming all the way from the other side of the Monhole Bridge. I followed one of the trucks one time. You do have pictures, I hope, of the trucks going into the property. And so, for Mr. Pelletier right now, this is really a cash cow for him. He is getting ready for the spring thaw. He's mixing his manure, his compost, his sand. In effect, he is manufacturing a product to sell on the open market. This is in violation of town ordinance. He's also in violation of many Rhode Island general laws, which I understand, we have copies of which. He is also in violation of the Right to Farm Act, which Mr. Ames used as an excuse as to why he might be able to do what he's doing. So, that's it in a nutshell. I'm open to some questions. We ask that, we do ask that you rescind the recommendation of the zoning official, which is to have us appeal this to the board of review. We just do not have the resources. As a matter of fact, we believe the onus is on Mr. Pelletier. We believe this is a nonconforming use in this area. We believe that he should go through the process, and this comes under special use town ordinance, Article 16, Section 1. Applicability in Section 2, criteria for all special use permits.
Mr. Flanagan, the town council has to operate under state law, and we do not have the authority to grant what you have requested us to do by law. Your appeal really is to the zoning board, and we do not have any authority to vary that. And if you would like to hear from our town solicitor, I will be glad to have him confirm that. We may be sympathetic individually or not, as the case may be, but we don't have the authority. And I know you have been here before, and I think I recall the same issue, not with regard to Mr. Pelletier, but the same process and procedure being asserted. We do not have that authority. We do not have the authority to waive fees for you or for other people who come into us. We have to operate under our own ordinance and under state law.
Do you wish me to address it?
Sure.
Yes. The council president is correct, that the town council has no authority to overrule the zoning official. It's interesting because up until 1994, you wouldn't have even had a right to the zoning board. If a official did nothing, you would have no right whatsoever. And the law was changed at that time to put in place a process where you could ask the zoning board official for a response, and if you didn't like his response, or if he failed to give you a response in 15 working days, you then have a right to appeal it to the zoning board. And that is the only remedy that you have here. The council can't interfere with the operation of the zoning officer or act as a super zoning board.
Thank you.
Well, everyone that we have contacted at the town hall told us we should come this route. So obviously, we're getting misinformation, and we're not getting the correct procedure and how to go about this.
I doubt very much if anybody, frankly, the town clerk. Oftentimes, people say, "We have a right to go before that town council," and the town clerk will often times try, or the administrator, try to say, "You can do it, but this is what you will hear," and just as you've heard from the Town Administrator. So I don't really think, and I haven't heard from the town clerk, but this oftentimes comes up, and that's why it was on the consent agenda, is that we bent over backwards to hear you, but we have no authority to do what you ask.
Well, then tell us exactly, how do we go before the zoning board? How do we go through that process?
There has been a, Mr. Ames and I, I mean, we're empathetic to some of the concerns that they have had, the Flanigans have had, and I know that Mr. Flanagan has brought some pictures to us, and we're clearly in violation where the property owner had pushed the envelope, and I think Gareth went down there and corrected those issues, and I know he did, and Mr. Ames is here. We have given them an application package that they would need to fill out. I mean, I think the issue that Mr. Flanagan has indicated to me was it was a hardship for him, and as I explained to him, I have no authority to override Mr. Ames, nor does the council. So, there is a packet, we'll be more than willing to help you fill it out, and so that you can, you know, appeal Mr. Ames's decision. Mr. Ames has no problem with you appealing his decision, and we'll help you fill the packet.
Well, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. We do have the packet, and my wife's a little behind the times on that. I know the procedure. What I was coming to the council, the council about was to get your ear and Gareth's ear through the town council, so that possibly we have a new avenue to attack here, and that's a nonconforming use.
Mr. Flan, Mr. Flanagan, please.
Which Mr. Ames did not address.
Then it's a matter that needs to go before the zoning board of review. That is their job, that is what they do. It is not this council. So I can't be any plainer than that.
Okay.
Thank you. Mrs. Aruda.
Mine is just a question on the request for the interdepartment budget transfer of $4,000 from account number 115-100, planner salary to account 107-623, the planning board office supplies. My only question to that, Mr. Steckman, is that I'm wondering if, because there's a seminar line on the budget, should some of that training that the planner is looking to attend and have that money transferred into go into that account rather than the office supplies?
It can go into that account. It's, we were just trying to keep it simple and put it into one account right now. It's actually corrected in next year's budget, where it would be in the seminar account. If you wish to, I would say probably put $1,000 in the seminar account and $3,000 in the office expense account, that should be sufficient.
That's fine. I'd appreciate that.
Go ahead.
I just also had a question. The remaining balance, 47, or 47.50 is what's going to be remaining in the account?
After his salaries paid out and everything else for the, you know, I--
I just wanted to make sure--
I realized that after I wrote that, I said, "You know, I probably could have phrased that a little better."
Just making sure. I didn't think that was going to get us through the years.
No.
Thanks.
I mean, you've all gotten my budget memo. We're looking at, you know, we're reviewing these things each month very closely now to see where we're going to be, so probably be coming back with some transfers another month or so.
Thanks.
So, $1,000 going to the seminar account--
$3,000--
And $3,000 at the office--
Office, pending your approval.
You want to make a motion to that effect?
Sure, make a motion that $1,000 of the $4,000 go into the seminar line, which is line number 107-521, traveling seminars, and $3,000 to go into office supplies, which is--
623.
623.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the council is sitting as a board of licensing commissioners. Town clerk, you have, we have before us a JPA Enterprises renewal of--
Motion to approve, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Administrator, appointments and resignations.
Oh, another one.
Oh, sorry. Algonquin.
Motion to approve their excavating license, subject to meeting all legal avoidance.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Administrator.
You have before you a list of residents and the committees they would like to serve. It has been your practice to invite the people to come in and speak with you and for you to interview them. We are looking at doing this at your next meeting. Before we began this process, started the meeting at 6 o'clock, so allow you an opportunity to interview them, I just want to know what your desire was. Our next meeting is the 26th, so we'd like to let these people know if they need to be here at 6 or 7.
Having had to come before the council, I strongly recommend we do it for our meeting, make it a little more informal--
Informal.
And a little less rigid.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're going to put you out there with a smiley face.
You know, Jay, the whole intent of it was to be as informal as possible anyways, and for some--
Well, not when I went before it a decade ago.
Oh, okay.
That was B.C.
So can we agree that this will be at 6 o'clock at our next meeting? Folks?
Yeah.
I'll bring supper for you, Mr. Bowlin.
Make that two orders, please.
Two orders, coming up. Okay, so be it.
6:00 P.M. on the 26th?
6:00 P.M. Moving along.
Just one question on this. Were there any other people who applied that didn't make this list, or is this the complete list?
This is, my knowledge, the complete list.
Now, should somebody apply between now and the 26th, will the names be amended to this list by then?
That is your pleasure. We tried to get, we gave everybody the 31st deadline. If they didn't fill out the exact form, we still put them on.
Since the town has such dire need for some really good volunteers, I would be more than glad to make a motion that we would accept them as they come in.
And embrace them.
Yes.
Right up until Friday.
Right up until Friday.
Yep. I'll second that.
As a motion has been made by Mr. Edwards, seconded by Mr. Carroll. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
More than mine. We need people.
Okay, moving on. We have an appointment through our landfill subcommittee, continues from January 22.
The only thing that I would add, Madam President, is Mr. Wyman has definitely expressed his interest in serving, and I know that the clerk was doing some research for you also.
The, all indications are that it does not have to be a member of the council. It was, it worked out that way with Buzz, and I think that I'd like to make a motion to appoint--
to appoint Buzz Wyman to the landfill subcommittee, to continue as a member of the landfill subcommittee on behalf of the council.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. That's his punishment for losing an election. Okay, town administrator.
In meeting with the wastewater management commission, they have expressed an interest to have the DPW director, Mr. Webster, serve as an ex officio member. I know the chair is here at the meeting tonight, if he may want to add something, but I know that they moved their meetings to accommodate Mr. Webster's schedule, and if you have no problem with it, they'd like to see him formally appointed as an ex officio member.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Webster as an ex officio member of the wastewater management commission.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Now you're stuck.
Next item is the appointment of Councilor Aruda as liaison to the school committee. Is there a motion to that?
Second. You're nervously, everybody?
All those in favor of the motion by Mr. Madeira, seconded by Mr. Carroll, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, unfinished business. Town council. The town treasurer.
James Amoranti's town treasurer. Madam President, at the last meeting, Councilman Madeira requested, I believe, a list of duties and responsibilities for a full-time finance officer. And just by way of brief background, we have been discussing some time now the two options that seem to satisfy the instructions from the voters as a result of the November elections. And that's that at the top of the financial pyramid in Tiverton, there be an elected treasurer. Some time back, I gave you a list, and Glenn's been looking at it, of the duties of a temporary full-time treasurer who would serve until the, until November 4, 2008, at which time somebody would be elected to finish the remaining two years of my term. The other option that seems to satisfy the voter mandate is a part-time elected treasurer and a full-time finance officer. And again, in response to Councilman Madeira's query, I put together by my memo of February 6, the duties of the full-time finance officer, and provided you with what I thought were my steps incident to achieving this option, which I have always expressed a preference for. And I was briefly going to go through it and ask any, answer any questions the council may ask. There's one change, too, on the first page, paragraph 2 under ballot question. There's a slight addition which I've underlined. I've made additional copies. I'm going to pass them out. But it's what's been underlined and read, and also I, so you can identify which copy you're looking at. I've changed the date with this addition to February 7. So I, so you have, you have on the first page, a ballot question, which I think is the first step, incident to adopting this option, if that's what's going to come to pass. And on the second page, is a rather long list of duties and responsibilities for the full-time finance officer, which I put together, and that, of course, if we're going to pursue this option, or consider it further, then certainly we may want to, at some point, go over all these duties, or myself and the town administrator. But in any event, this option, I feel, requires a ballot question. And I say in my memo that the ballot question, in terms of timeline, would, it would be very timely to submit the question if we are going to have a special election in May or June for the election of charter commission members to examine changes to the charter. Because this can be submitted, this ballot question can be submitted at a special election. So I've listed what I felt are the duties and responsibilities that the voters, electors, and taxpayers expect the town treasurer to retain. And I think the, having discussed this matter for some time, we may be fairly close to the point where the council is going to have to decide who gets the four votes, the full-time elected treasurer or part-time treasurer, full-time appointed finance officer. I could go on, but why don't I stop here? And Glenn may want to add some things. Thank you.
Before we start on this, if you detect some exasperation in my voice, it's there. Over a month ago, this council decided by majority vote that we would follow a two-step process. And the two steps were, the first process, I believe it was at our January 6 meeting...
To prepare an advertisement.
An advertisement, to see if there was a person in the town who would meet the qualifications for a full-time person and would be willing to serve as an elected official. We have been waiting for that advertisement. It has been put off, continued, et cetera. We made this decision. If we find there is nobody out there that has the qualifications, that meet what we need, we will take the next step. But this council, by majority vote, did exactly that on, I believe it was January 6. It's now February 12. A simple advertisement, we don't have it. At our last meeting...
You do.
You do, Madam President.
Well, okay. Is it in this draft that Jim just...
It is, it is in part of the packet that was from the last meeting. And the only thing that...
I'd like to respond, if I may. I prepared exactly what you are stating in December. I prepared a draft of duties and responsibilities of treasurer.
You did.
January 6. On January 6, I prepared a draft advertisement for temporary full-time treasurer. I am waiting for Glenn to finish reviewing it.
I agree with you.
That's right.
And the purpose of my comment is, that is done. I mean, the only, the only comment that I would have had in here is that if we have a more lengthy discussion on the job description, on what it would be, whether you want to call it finance officer, which Jim has on his memo on page 2 of tonight, I have no problem going ahead and putting this advertisement out. The only other thing is, is a fuller description than what the advertisement has would be in the same mind that we did with the town planner. You have an advertisement for the job that is open, and for a fuller job description, you go to the town of Tiverton website, and you click it on, and it would give you the full description. And I think where Jim and I are, I think, in agreement, is whether you call it a finance officer or full-time treasurer on page 2, if the council wants to go with the full-time treasurer, this is pretty much what the person's going to have, should be able to do or understand what he or she is getting into. Because as you're well aware, we can't put qualifications on the position. But the person needs to understand what it's going to be about.
Well, I think in the advertisement we're putting out there, I think we can put any qualification we want, because this is something that the council is basically saying, you know, if this person was to run for the office, we could not put a qualification.
Correct.
We can put any qualification we want on this position, and if someone, a resident of the town, meets the qualifications we're looking for, and this was the whole secret to this thing, then we would be able to let Jim resign and appoint someone till the next election, someone we knew that was knowledgeable, could do the job, and be electable. And it resolved this issue. If we don't have someone that fits that bill, then we go to option 2, which is the part-time treasurer and a full-time financial officer, where he doesn't have to be a resident of the town to fulfill the need. And I thought that, you know, this was the discussion we had back in December, and waiting to see that advertisement go forward, so we take step 2.
So if there's exasperation in your voice, there's exasperation in my voice, that I've come back here since December, waiting for somebody to say, "The advertisement and the duties are fine."
Okay.
I just keep coming. But as a courtesy to Councilman Madeira, he asked for it, and I provided it.
And we fully understand that, Jim, and the frustration, I think, I will also, you know, speak of the frustration, because this really doesn't need to move forward. I think we're tying you up and leaving you in limbo, and it's unfair to you. And I think that's what we need, to just move forward with this advertisement, and see if someone comes forward, then we can make our next move.
But if, if the advertisement is correct, and you agree with, whether you call this on page 2, the finance officer, these are really the duties that this individual is going to take upon him or herself. If that's agreeable, we're all set to go.
Then we need to move forward.
Yes, I, this was the ad that you prepared, and our last meeting, you had pulled it and said, "I want..."
No, I didn't.
"...to allow time to prepare the advertisement." Okay. The one thing that I would say is that where you have certain words as required, I would say is preferred, because we don't know what is out there, and what we should do is make sure that who is, whatever, it should be more open than just as required, because we may have an excellent candidate that has comparable experience to the five to seven years of progressively responsible experience in municipal finance. I would add on that, or comparable experience, so that at least, you know, we are opening up to make sure that we've done the proper search.
Just, what I'd mentioned at the last meeting, the question I had is, and which I still have, is the qualifications that are listed here, if, for whatever reason, we decided not to go with a full-time elected treasurer, which I'm not in support of doing, would these same qualifications, if we were to advertise, rather than having to advertise once and then have to advertise again for a part-time treasurer if we don't go forward with a full-time treasurer, would these same qualifications hold steady for a part-time treasurer? In other words, could we put a single advertisement out and attract candidates either for full-time or part-time?
But I was under the impression, I was under the impression, if we find a person who can fulfill the duties of the financial officer, okay, if, all of them, we could appoint him as a treasurer, and Jim was willing to resign. If we don't find that person, Jim is going to remain the part-time treasurer, and we're going to have a financial officer. So it isn't a matter of trying to find someone who could fill the part-time requirements of treasurer.
But I'm saying, my impression was Mr. Amoranti was going to resign, was looking to resign in any case, and my...
As full-time.
Even if it were part-time?
No.
Was that not the case?
No. If you opt for a full-time elected treasurer, my position has always been, since I've been the driving force behind turning the position into a full-time position, that I could not create the position and then step into a full-time job. I don't think it's proper. Therefore, if we opt for a full-time treasurer, elected treasurer, I would resign. If we're going to opt for a part-time elected treasurer, full-time finance officer, makes no sense for me to resign.
Okay.
For you to turn around and appoint a part-time treasurer.
Sure. I wasn't clear on that. I thought...
My only question I should tell you is that the council president and I continue to work on three very important financing matters for the new elementary school. We're working on a $5 million ban next month. We're working on an over $10 million permanent financing for the new elementary school. And in August, we're working on a $20 million bond anticipation note for Fort Barton and Pecasset School renovations. And these, these matters are very important, and at this point, I'm a little reluctant to drop this on an incoming finance person. And it may very well be that I would rather stay until August 30. And I really would like to submit a letter of resignation to make this, to get some finality to it. The letter of resignation could be subject to you having appointed a temporary treasurer.
But, yeah.
I'd do that.
Jim, Jim, I really, I really don't think the letter of resignation, I think what we need to do is show you the good faith, you know, of the council in moving forward to resolve the issue. Because a letter of resignation is not what we're going to take if we find that we don't have the person to appoint as a full-time treasurer. We're going to go with the finance director, and hopefully you stay on as the part-time elected treasurer until the next election, till the end of your term, because that's, you know...
Yeah, my resignation could be subject to that, but putting that aside for the moment, my point, Don, was that if you kindly referred to the advertisement, what I'm saying is that I, I would change the second line to seeking to appoint a temporary full-time town treasurer for the period, and I would put down September 2007 to November 4, 2008. This allows us to complete the temporary financing, the $20 million ban, so that this new person doesn't walk into that horror show. So I'm only asking...
So you only want us to change June to September?
Yeah, and I would, I'd make just a couple of changes, but what I would like to suggest is that we get, any changes or suggestions, we get to Mr. Administrator by tomorrow at 5:00.
Why don't, why don't we get these things, why don't we resolve these things tonight on this advertisement, so that there is no more issue of this? We just move it forward.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? Other than Jim's date change, is that where you go, I think in the second paragraph, which has everybody concerned.
Yes.
Graduation from an accredited college or university with a BA in government, finance, accounting, or closely related field is preferred.
Yes.
Five to seven years of progressively responsible experience in municipal finance is required, or comparable experience may be substituted. You know, and I think the rest is, is pretty much follows what you want down, other than when you want your deadline. And I would also add in there somewhere a sentence, a further description of job duties may be found on the town of Tiverton website, which then I would recommend taking the finance officer's duties, which are 15 of them, and utilizing... officer's duties, which are 15 of them, and utilize that. The only change I would make in that is on 12, and I'm not even sure why it says this in the charter. But we have more than one union contract, and AFSNE is, AFSNE is not the only one, but that the position person would assist in all union contract negotiations.
That's fine. I think it, I think it AFSNE because the employees in that office fall under that contract. It may have been listed that way.
That's what I sensed. But...
But I agree, the treasurer should assist in all of the union contracts.
That's the only change in that. Yeah, and that we had in the original that we worked on six months ago, we were, eight months ago, we were talking about having a finance officer.
How about the deadline, application deadline? We should give a reasonable period. Lord, it's taken us two months to get here.
Thirty days?
No, I'd go, I'd go a six weeks, maybe.
Yeah.
Six weeks?
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I was saying, give as much time as possible.
So, Mr. Edwards?
That puts it to the end of March, basically. Why don't you make it March 30th?
Friday, March 30th.
Okay.
Now, I guess I would ask from a practical standpoint here, March 30th, September 30th, or when is five to six months away?
No, September 1st.
September 1st is still five months away, roughly. Do you want to bring this person on board early and let him begin, or her begin phasing in? That's the only problem I see on the September 30th, because someone's, excuse me, September 1st, Jim, I apologize.
That's right. Let us see what we get.
Yeah.
I would not get ahead of ourselves on this.
If, no, I have to agree with Madam President on this one. We do the March 30th because if we don't find a candidate here, we may have to do a second advertisement for this financial person who could not become an elected treasurer.
We might have to spend a broader net.
Yes.
Yes, we might.
Because right here, we're looking for local, here we're looking for a local candidate who can fit the qualification, so that, and I think the timeframe works out, because if we fail to come up with this person by March 30th, it gives us the time to go through the whole process, you know, prior to the September, where we're looking to have somebody ready to step in.
Because my intention in working with the town clerk, unlike what we did with the planner, did a large search to just more use the local newspaper, since we're looking more for a local candidate.
And that's fine. I think you want to keep this one, you know, the local candidates on this first round. And I don't think the process is gonna take us long, because this is actually, we're looking over candidates who would be appointed. And because it's an appointment, I don't think it has to go through the personnel board to do the interview process.
That was my next question.
What we're looking for is somebody who we could appoint to be a treasurer. And I would think that that would not fall under the purview of going through that process. The second one would have to, and would require the additional time.
Okay.
Yeah, one...
I mean, if somebody's, has got a different opinion, let's, you know, get that one head out.
Just, Councilman Madeiras's question is an important question, which does require an answer, because it has to do with what if. The difference between the so-called full-time treasurer, elected full-time treasurer's duties are, as Councilmen Volin states, that's what the charter says. The other option, the so-called part-time treasurer would not, cannot have the same duties as the full-time treasurer. Some of those duties, the part-time treasurer option, those duties have to be reassigned to the finance officer. And that really has to be done by charter amendment.
Is there no procedure? I mean, what I was envisioning was more basically maintaining, since you could certainly say, based on the last election, we want to maintain the part-time treasurer, at least as it is now, with those same responsibilities. Is it not possible to add somebody in the administrative part of town government to be the finance officer without having to transfer these responsibilities through a charter change?
That was how this originally started, when I approached Dave Seuss, the former town administrator, and at that time, my original suggestion was a financial assistant. So yes, a financial assistant could work within the treasurer's office under a part-time elected treasurer.
It just seems like to me the priority is to get somebody in the administrator's, under the administrator's authority that's part of that process, so that he's not doing all the numbers himself, and that just seems an undue burden. If you look at any town government the size, the school department, everyone has that type of a financial person. And I don't see a full-time elected treasurer filling that position. I think that position, regardless of what happens with the treasurer, is an important thing for us to fill, whatever we call it. And I would rather not touch the treasurer's position. I'd rather leave it as a part-time, as it has the responsibilities now, because then we're not, we're not tampering with the vote at the last election, where people, whatever message you want to take from it, was let's keep it the way we have it now, in terms of the treasurer's responsibility.
A finance assistant working for the part-time treasurer would be in that chain of command, and there could be some governance problems.
No, I'm just saying, is there any way to have it under the administrator, as part of the administrative part of the government, not under the treasurer?
Yes, by charter amendment. Thank you.
Okay.
So it's my understanding that we are going forward...
With the advertisement.
With the advertisement.
Well, that's good news. Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, there are duties duplicated in both the treasurer's description and the administrator's, the finance officer's description.
Hopefully, we find, hopefully, we find the person. And I know there's, I know there's some people in this town that really do qualify, and hopefully they're interested, who could serve that need. And they could be the treasurer, which eliminates the ballot questions and so forth and so on, because we would have a treasurer who meets those qualifications, and hopefully he'd want to stick around for a while, and he'll run, and...
He or she.
He or she, yeah.
Yes. Okay.
How about going out and trying to remove these?
We'll wait.
Okay. Can we move to two? Under E2?
This is where a memo didn't get to you, so I retyped the memo, giving more detailed explanation why I was asking for this release of carry-forward funds. And I also gave you a detailed memo, I believe dated January 23rd, which would go to cover a shortfall in that the amount that was estimated in the budget was incorrect last year. It was originally data entryed. And we have a, we've never accounted for the school resource officer, and that is now being accounted for in this year's budget.
I would ask, is the resource officer a municipal requirement or a school department requirement? And if it's a school department requirement, why isn't it in their budget?
I don't have, I will just explain the history that I have with it. I'm sure there are people here who could speak to it maybe more eloquently than I can. But it is my understanding that a decision was made to take a Tiverton police officer or offer it to him or her first when grant money came up. The town originally had a grant for $125,000 and agreed to match it, let's say by about $40,000 or $45,000, which was a budgeted estimate at that particular time, for salary and for expenses. It's outgrown that, because healthcare has increased higher. It was to be a town item. I don't know if it was ever further discussed to go to the school department. There are times when he does work for the town, when he's not in school. And he has actually served as a way to free up additional officers' times by addressing a number of issues in the schools, where we were not dispatching police officers to handle those problems. I would say, Hannibal, that he was, he probably spends 90 days a year on police duty outside the schools.
I have a different question.
Yes, ma'am.
At some point, we're gonna settle the police contract. And the monies that we have been using, we used the last, okay, and now we're using these currently. If that were to settle this year, where would the monies come from?
Well, the monies actually, the 3% was, that is out there right now, was included in it. It's just the number of people wasn't added up right when a budget was originally submitted. We were short basically one and a half police officers.
No, no, I don't think that's my question.
You're wondering where the, where the money's gonna come if...
If we were to settle the police contract, the union contract.
Right.
Those monies, and I voted for this last week, and I began to second doubt, second guess myself. But where, where will those monies come from if we have to come up with money?
You won't have to come up with money if you make this transfer, of the, the transfer in. There should be more than enough, there should be enough money then to cover the raises that we, if we do have a settlement, to take retroactivity back to July 1 of this year. The shortfall that we come, will, experience will be in a healthcare line item because of part of the negotiations on healthcare. But the raises are here, they're there. With the 80s, the monies being transferred, they're there.
Well, your memo says this will cover a shortfall indicated to you on January 23rd, 2007. And I know I've seen that letter, but I don't have it with me. And it was, I'd sort of like to know, what's the breakdown between the resource officer position, the...
It's $51,000.
$51,000.
It's between 18 and 19 for the school resource officer. There is another $4,000 to $5,000 in back pay that was paid to a police officer who had been out on military duty. And the balance of that rest should be more than enough to cover the six months of salary.
I'd like to see the figures on that.
Well, I can...
Because I, if it's $51,000 plus 18, I, somehow this is...
You may remember the conversation I had with you towards the end of the budget last year, when I was going in and doing a more detailed review of the police department, that I was finding the numbers were not totaling.
Right. And you identified those in a, in a January 23rd memo.
Corrects that.
Okay. My question is, it's broader than that. It is, what happens if we settle with all the police officers? Where will the money come from? Because I understood what you were saying is, it's covered in the $78,000?
It's covered in the $78,000, and it's covered in the current budget. If we...
It's covered in the current, okay.
Okay. I have, I have a little bit of a problem with the statement also, and here it is. If we have, if we have a shortfall in the salary account of $78,000...
Correct.
Okay? And a raise is to be given effective to last, you know, July for that year, there's gotta be a bigger shortfall than $78,000.
When the person, when the budget was submitted last year, they had calculated in a 3% raise. Unfortunately, they did not calculate it in with the right number of personnel. And that is the reason why we need to go back into this, this account to bring this money fully into this year's budget.
Is that the $51,000?
That's the $51,000, not including the school resource officer.
Which is 18 or 19.
18 and 19. And there is another $4,000 to $5,000 for an approval that had to be made for a police officer who was away on military duty that we, conferring with the attorney, we did owe that police officer that money. That money was, I can only make the belief that that money was budgeted into that $78,000, which was requested by, to be carried forward by the police chief last year.
So at the end of this year, we will have monies to carry forward from this account, assuming...
Yes, ma'am.
This is not settled.
Yes, ma'am.
With the exception of healthcare.
And they...
Well, the healthcare will be a whole different...
Which is...
Issue.
The school...
That's another totally separate line item.
Separate line item. Is the school resource officer gonna work the same, during the same period of the year as a school teacher does?
No.
No.
That's the 90 days he was talking about. He works in the police department for the summer, when the schools are closed.
Can I ask what he's doing during those 90 days?
He's out on patrol.
Working as a police officer.
The, the problem that, the issue that we're trying to address in other areas is how we count him as a police officer, because he is not counted in the manning part of the schedule.
And he should not be counted in the contract as well, which mandates a certain number of, of police officers, in my opinion.
Well, he's not counted in the contract with, with those numbers. He is over and above that. I mean, folks, this is, this was negotiated long before I got here.
I'm not blaming you for anything.
No, I'm not just saying, I'm just, I wanna make sure everybody understands this. This is how this was created, because we are coming to the end in August, excuse me, in December, it's the contract, the grant was extended through December of this year. And that'll be the end of the three years. Then we are obligated only for one more year to hold that position as part of our requirements of the grant. And then that's gonna be a whole other issue to be discussed at that point.
Then I would suggest that we hire this new police officer, school resource officer, on a temporary appointment, or at the end of our obligation, we can lay him off, or whatever the term is for...
That didn't happen. That didn't happen. He's there already. He's been hired. He was a police officer that was currently there, and he was replaced. So when, when our year of obligation is up after the end of the grant, we have an additional police officer on board. Well, he's probably gonna stay right where he is. I mean, you were looking at it like, I don't see that the school department's gonna say there's no longer a need for a school resource officer. I mean, the reason they applied...
If it's for free, then that's gonna be...
It wasn't for free, it's never for free. We knew that right from the get-go.
It's free to the school department.
They put a carrot out to you, they dangle a carrot and tell you, here's X number of dollars, and you hire the guy, you pay all the benefits, you pay everything else. We hired this, we put that position in the school department, and the school department is gonna tell you, and I'm sure they're gonna tell you, there's a need for this. And I think that we're hearing the same thing, that a lot less responses to the high school from the police department, because they have an officer there. So it was one of those situations that we're just gonna be, this is a position that's going to exist probably, you know, right down the line. The school department ain't telling us that, you know, everything was turning out to be hunky-dory in the school department, and we no longer need a police officer, or a school resource officer. It's a position they feel there's a great need for, they applied for the grant to get it, and it's gonna continue to be a need. And so it's, it's a matter of, I agree with you, we may argue after this year into next year, whose has the responsibility for the number? Does it come under our police budget, or does it come under the school budget? Well, that's an argument we'll take up, you know, when we're paying the salary. But that's something that's, you know, they came before this council and asked permission to hire this, this resource officer to accept the grant, and the council decided to allow him to accept the grant, knowing full well, you know, what the terms and conditions were. So that's, that's where we're at.
I think, and I think, Mr. Cost, I think if you're looking years ago, I think you'd probably say that's how the police department probably expanded by a couple of offices many years ago.
That's exactly true.
Was through a grant program, because, you know, realistically, it's very tough to get the money to, to hire an additional officer, so they were doing it on a grant program. So that's how that officer got hired. As I remember, you, going back a few years ago, you were probably the clerk when that position came before, you probably took the minutes to it.
Okay, I read that.
But realistically, that's, that's a position that the town is gonna ultimately pick up. Maybe we can work something out with the schools, where we can, you know, that we can work something out, that the school department will pick up some of the funding for that officer during the school year. But that officer will be an officer 365 days a year, like every one of them. Just, just as a point of interest, that particular officer himself made one of the biggest busts in the history of the town of Tiverton during his off time from the school. He made a motor vehicle stop on Fish Road and made a very, very big bust for this town.
Let me speak to the fact that he's a very valuable source in the school. He has, he has become a, pretty much a mentor to the kids there. He can diffuse things that was... He can diffuse things that would pretty much escalate into something that would be a potential situation at the school. So he's become a very, very valuable resource officer within the school department and to the town.
Okay. I think we might be ready for a vote on this.
Motion, motion to release the carryforward funds in account 99-331-101 of seventy-eight thousand, two oh four ten, the, the police labor account, 333-101.
Second. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Recreation Commission, Mr. Cook.
I think you have, I think you have the...
Oh, the planning board.
No. I think you said, you're going back to the first page of the carryforwards?
No, the planning board has the release of...
Yes. Request release of the carryforward funds. Anybody, Mr. Noel?
Good evening. My memo of January 30th. We started with our five thousand dollars, and at this point, or the complaint of January 30th, we're just about out of funds. Now, some of the, those monies will be reimbursed for review costs, but there are others that are not reimbursed. But we have a, a fairly large land development subdivision before us, and we have the time we set up an escrow account and have the applicant submit some estimated amount, nine or ten thousand dollars in an escrow account that has nothing to do with this account. We can draw on that. But there are others, smaller ones, where we don't do that, and we bill out of this, pay our costs for reviews or whatever out of this account, and we're appropriate, then we bill the applicant. But there are times, and, and some of our bills were for the compliance, mapping services that are not reimbursable, others where there's a need for us to get some work done and not reimbursable, that kind of thing. Now, I'm not suggesting the entire nineteen thousand be transferred, but some nominal amount that will carry us forward. And it's hard to estimate at this point, two, three, four thousand, something.
I mean, could you give us a figure of what you estimate your needs are for the remainder of the fiscal year?
My guess is, I wouldn't even...
Well, I mean, I mean...
Say twenty-five hundred dollars and see how that carries.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, if it's more realistic that, I mean, there's nineteen thousand, one oh one in the carryforward account. I mean, if four thousand dollars is likely to carry you through, then I have no problem making a motion for, to, to transfer four, four thousand dollars from the carryforward funds to the account requested.
Is there a second to that motion? Any further discussion?
May I speak to this issue? I met, Noel and Rosemary took their time in, you know, trying to help reduce the budget. One of the problems that I see with this account, and I don't know how to address it, but I'll throw it out to you. Instead of these being carryforward monies, is somehow these be placed in a restricted fund so that we could lower the amount of money that we need to budget? And if, and if they need to go in, it's there in a restricted fund versus a carryforward fund. If they have money left over one year, it would be swept back into that account. You know, this would get us away from these carryforward funds, which I know is a philosophy that the council would like to move away from. And I don't know how you feel about it. I mean, because what we're going to do next year is, if we look at the budget, we may budget seven or eight thousand dollars, they may not need it, and, or they might need two thousand, but if the money was there, they could go back into this fund and get it, and it would save us from having to budget eight thousand, or maybe two thousand would get us through. We've done, taken the same approach with, after we had the same discussion with the fire, the phone suppression. Take that, monies that come in and replenish that account.
You may have a point, but that is a subject for a different night when we talk about our budget. So the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Now, Mr. Cook.
Madam President, I'm here before you tonight to raise the beach fees for nonresidents for next year. I know the package that Teresa turned in for you is a little bit lengthy, I'm going to boil it down to you with a couple of lines. What we're looking for is for passenger cars, a weekday rate of five dollars, weekends and holidays of ten. For RVs, campers, and vehicles that are towing a trailer, with the exclusion of boats that use the ramp at Foglin. We're looking for weekday rates of ten, holiday and weekend rates of fifteen, and we're looking to increase the season pass from fifty to sixty-five dollars.
What are the, the current daily and weekend fees?
The current daily for passenger vehicles is still five and ten. We cannot raise that. What we're raising is for the RVs, campers, and cars towing trucks.
So these aren't changing?
No. Passenger vehicles, we did not feel it was warranted raising.
So you're just doing RVs and ones calling campers?
And the season pass?
And the season pass.
I'll make the motion out through the, in these CHPs as explained by Mr. Cook.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business, town administrator.
A meeting ago, I guess it was, we've had this ongoing discussion of appointment of a fire marshal and, and what is acceptable, can it be a civilian? And, you know, it is, it's raised a lot of concerns on some members' parts. So I asked the, the chief to speak with the state fire marshal, because it gets down into the terms of non-salaried, and what is a non-salaried firefighter, fire assistant deputy state fire marshal? And essentially, that is the fire marshal who works for us, or works for local fire departments. So I want the chief to speak more clearly to this, so that hopefully we can get this issue put behind us, so there's no questions that, what the state fire marshal is, is looking for in his interpretation of the law.
Mr. Steckman, Madam President, when this was brought up, there was an inference that I had not spoken completely to the council on this. So we did research it further. You should have information. I gave Mr. Steckman a full packet on this with a response as to a clarification from the state fire marshal and from my office on the, the issue itself. I was presented with a document, which was off of the state website for the fire safety code with several items. We use the term state fire marshals. It's what we use when we reference to most people who do inspections, but the term actually is incorrect. There is only a singular state fire marshal. That is Mr. Farrell, who is appointed by the governor to represent, oversee the Fire Board of Review and Appeal and the Fire Code, Uniform Fire Code for the state of Rhode Island. Under his authority, he has, within the state's jurisdiction, the ability to appoint those persons who are connected with fire departments that are responsible for the enforcement of the state fire code, and the inspection of properties relative to the state fire code, and to issue citations for that. Under the state fire code, the violations of the state fire code are a criminal offense. So he has that authority for who he has to appoint. Those are referred to in the state law, chapter, I think it's title twenty-three, chapter twenty-eight, and off the top of my head, I'm going to say twenty-three, six, I believe it, but I'm not a hundred percent sure of that. Non-salaried assistant deputy state fire marshals. That's what our employees are. We can offset some of their fees by charging fees for plan reviews, inspections, and things such as that. We have chosen on our end to do a little bit less for what we are charging for it, but they are assigned through the fire department. The question that was asked, do they have to be a firefighter? Because they are responsible for code enforcement and fire investigations, and throughout charter, those people come through the fire department. They have to be assigned to the fire department to do that.
There was nothing in your packet, however, that says that, except a comment by the fire marshal in that it's his policy to go to the fire department.
There should be a letter dated February 1st to Mr. Steckman in reference to that. There should also be, that should be followed with a, the cover fax letter from the state fire marshal's office, because he faxed it to me very quickly. He was not able to sign it himself, but he got me the fax copy. That should be a two-page document. That should be followed by two interpretations from the Fire Board of Appeal and Review, which should be 99-3 and 99-4.
Yeah, I've read those.
And then a copy of the state fire code, which should have twenty-three, twenty-eight point two dash two circled on it. If you do not have that, I can give you that cover letter if you need it.
What was the date for the, of the cover letter?
February 1st, sir.
Cover letter was addressed.
Yeah, I don't have it.
The cover letter was addressed to me. The rest of the material I addressed to you as the council. It was answering, answering certain questions that I had, but I felt that this was the response from the state fire marshal, because the question has been, can a civilian, non... I, we'll have copies for it.
But I think the, the council should have the letter from the fire chief.
Okay.
So if you could get that.
Thank you, Chief. Well, let me say that I think the question about whether you have to be a member of the fire department or not is, is really moot, because the regulations state that if you're not a member of a fire department, he will not appoint you, and as a result, you will not benefit from the, the liability waiver that applies to these appointments.
That is correct.
So, I don't know why we're discussing it, to say the truth. I think, Chief, maybe, maybe you can help us out, and probably, probably something that, that this town, like every other community in the state, is going to have to look at. And since that dreadful night of February 20th of 2003, if I'm not mistaken, I think that's the correct date, and that's, and that's the, and, and that's when we lost those hundred people, God forgive them. The, the state has, has come up with all the laws pertaining, and changed all their fire regulations, and actually, that, that position has expanded so much that, you know, with no disrespect to, to, to what the duties were performed before, with running around doing smoke detector inspections, and if there was some kind of incident where the, the inspections were very limited. Now, that, that field has broadened so much, like, we know that they have to do plan reviews and everything else. Where do you see that going to? And, and the reason why I say that is I look at it, and from, from what I see, every time we bring someone new in, it's a million dollar investment to this town. And just within the past year, year and a half, that we've seen what's gone on, just the changes that's happened, and what I see personally that's gone on as far as the plan reviews and everything else. I personally see that position in this Tiverton Fire Department, within the next couple of years, just based on the, on the recommendation, on the first budget proposal from the town administrator, that position's going to be a full-time position, one way or another, whether we like it or not. If it's not going to be next year, the year after, or the year after that, within the next five years, the fire marshal, in my opinion, we're going to have a deputy fire marshal position that's going to be full-time, one way or another, whether anybody likes it or not. What's your, what's your opinion? What's your take on it? What do you, I hate to put you on the spot, but...
That's fine, Counselor Carroll, I, I don't mind that at all. I do believe that the liability that is placed on the community for not having it in place, or not being able to completely perform the, the inspection that we need to, trying to do them on a part-time basis. We are not the only community that is wrestling with this. Portsmouth just had a very large discussion, they currently have a deputy chief who strictly does that. I can tell you that the majority of my time gets spent answering fire prevention questions, helping with review, going out and meet. I'm constantly being pulled out of my office to go meet out on the road with contractors or people that come up that have an immediate problem that comes up, because we don't have a marshal on at the time. So I get pulled away from other things that I have to. A lot of things fall between the cracks. The time is here, we need to look at it. I think there are ways that we can go about it at a very minimum cost to the town. Some of them may cost, may end up costing fees that will be borne by the users of the system. But I do think, as Mr. Costa has mentioned, that there should be some way of reimbursing. That way is there, we just need to take a look at it.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. Mr. Maderas.
Just to put this on the agenda, just to make sure that we're all on the same page as far as the new, the new state law, as far as the income tax cap. Particularly because, as I, and I've read through it, but particularly in going through it, it refers primarily to a system where the town council is, is the appropriating body. And the system where we have a financial town meeting, that is, that is, that board is the appropriating body. I just want to make sure that I understand and that everyone's on the same page with the process here, because there are a number of things that, that come up. As, as I understand the process now, you're talking about, in order to override the cap, there's a supermajority of the council, six members of a seven-member board would be needed to approve that, that override. A couple of things I'm not clear is whether the approval of the governor's office of administration is still required to do that under this, as it was previously, whether that's still required. But also whether it would be the town council that would be seeking that, that ability to, or would be taking that vote to approve, override the cap, or whether that would be the financial town meeting is the appropriating body. Couple of other questions as well, but in terms of, would that something we'd have to do in advance, as is previously done, because you need the approval of the, of the administration department of the governor? Or is it something that could be done after the financial town meeting vote is taken, if the cap is exceeded?
Budget Office Municipal Affairs sent out the, their instructions on March 30th of 2006. So my, my guess and expectation is that they will forward the same type of instructions to the various towns and cities. Let me just say that last year's instructions required that any request to exceed the, at the time it was 5.5 percent property tax cap, must be signed and submitted by the chief executive officer, my guess is it's the council president, along with the required documentation, at least fifteen to thirty days prior to the adoption of the annual budget. So if we're going to back up from whatever it is, May 16th this year. But we tried to, we, Glenn and I were working on it last year, and we got it in. I got the letter in on April 4th of last year with the request. As far as that, that section of the act that talks about override, I, I believe you'll find, and I, I certainly defer to Andy Tice, but I believe you'll define that in the instance where there is no financial town meeting, a supermajority of the council is required, where there is a financial town meeting, a, a simple majority of the electors present at the financial town meeting can override, whatever override means.
And with that override, with that new override feature, whether it's a majority of a financial town meeting or a supermajority of the council, is, is the approval of the municipal affairs office still required first?
In my opinion, again, I'll defer to Louise or Andy, but absolutely. You, you have to jump through hoops. They have added, added some additional exceptions in, in the latest amendments to the, to the general laws, the 4452. But some of those exceptions require that, that, that the excess has to be above fifteen percent, which means that just, and they say, for example, Brian, health insurance costs, retirement contributions, or utility expenditures are now, I believe, new exceptions whereby you can obtain relief from the cap, 5.25 this year. But which exceed the prior fiscal year's health insurance costs, retirement contributions, or utility expenditures by a percentage greater than three times the percentage increase or three times 5.25. So just because you, you exceed it is not enough. The threshold is, I believe, fifteen percent. The threshold is, I believe, 15% above.
Is preapproval required to be able to do this, or is this something that could be decided at a financial town meeting?
My understanding, my understanding has always been that it has to be preapproved, because if you look at the act, if you looked at 4452, it allows you, it says, this is subsection four, "Any levy pursuant to subsection three in excess of 5.15% shall be approved by a majority vote of the governing body," blah, blah, blah. Pursuant to subsection C, so you look at subsection C, and it lists the exceptions. So, yes, you can, I suppose, go to the financial town meeting for that relief, but the relief has to be for exceptions, approved, authorized exceptions, not something that the electors, with all due respect, say, "Well, we feel that that's necessary, so we're going to vote to exceed the cap." You can only vote to exceed the cap on those items that are identified as being able to go above the cap if you jump through certain hoops.
And to even have that option, it would have to have been requested and approved in advance of the financial meeting?
No, I think maybe Andy-
But doesn't it also, doesn't it also require two votes in order to have the exceed any level pursuant to subsection D on page three, where the affirmative vote of at least four fifths of the full membership of the governing body of the city and town? Or in the case of a city or town having a financial town meeting, the majority electors present and voting at the financial town meeting shall also approve the excess, meaning it takes two votes to exceed?
I agree. I think-
So if the council, if a four-fifths majority of the council doesn't approve, then I don't think the financial town meeting can, because I think this is saying it has to take both.
Yeah, that's the way I read it. Also, they did send out some additional, recently, some additional draft of regulations in which they list what the town can appropriate as a tax levy. It's a million-three.
Yeah.
Okay? And that is divided between the school, unless we fit setting aside debt service. And I do think that, as a matter of procedure, we should get out a waiver for the debt service to take care of the school bond issue, because that will be in excess, alerting them that as soon as our budget is prepared, I am not certain there is legislative authority to vary that. If we want a waiver, it's not going in and saying, "Our operating expenses are high." You've got to come within those, one of those three categories. And they do give the time limits as to when you are going to, when you have to go before them, but I think we should alert them now that, of the debt service waiver. And two, that alerting them that you may be in for an additional waiver. As I look at the statute, absent legislative change, things like increase in assessments, growth, I have no relevance. It may have a relevance to the tax rate, but I think we're going to be very hard-pressed, very hard-pressed to this particular year to come within the caps.
You will be told to have a cake sale, if you remember the judge in Superior Court.
Even if we could take, even if we could take some additional money from the surplus, and we don't have a final figure on that as yet, and if you allocate something more to the surplus, from the surplus, to the 1,003, you're looking at something under 2 million. We had a meeting with the school department, and their requests were over 2 million, over and above the appropriation from last year. So there's some substantial cutting that has to be done, even before we even contemplate going to the state. So I see this as very much a movable feast. I mean, Chris Carter is aware of these issues. He has said to me personally that he would like to meet with the council again in the middle of March. By that time, they'll have an overview of where budgets are, but this is not just something that we can seek a waiver about, because I don't see in the law that there's legislative authority to make changes, or just a waive. I think it's going to be a very, very tough year.
But from what I'm hearing, even for the things that are authorized to seek exceeding the cap, we need approval of both the, a supermajority of the council and the financial town meeting?
Yes.
Mr. Tights, is that-
Yeah.
I'm not sure I agree with that. Okay? And I don't want to, I don't think we need to get into it at this point, but I'm not sure I agree with that thing. I'm almost inclined to think it means that you need two votes at the financial town meeting, one for the basic levy and one for the excess levy, but that's something we'll find out as we go along, but I just don't want to be stopped from raising it in the future and saying, "Oh, you sat here in silence when we said that's the way it is."
That was the point of asking the question.
Oh, no, no, I want to get an interpretation, because I see also, you know-
I do, too.
Also.
Yeah.
But also is for what?
Yeah.
Well, I, as I read it, it's four fifths, which is five sevenths, of the full membership of the governing body of the city or town. Or in the case of a city or town having a financial town meeting, the majority of the electors present and voting shall also-
Approve the excess, the excess levy.
This is the problem when they start amending statutes, because my problem there is the "or" in the case of the city or town having a financial town meeting.
Yeah, when you say "or," and then "also."
Changes it completely. If they really wanted to do it, it's something we said, "And" for a town having a-
I see that, I see that, yeah.
So I think we'll have to find out, and there might be some legislative history that we can find out, what was the intent of the "also" added there.
I will agree with you on one thing, is that the, I think this is going to be a movable feast in interpretation, and having that contact, or even a meeting with the municipal affairs, would be a useful thing to do. Not saying this week, but I think by the early March, we probably should be up there with a variety of questions, because they're going to have them from every community.
Madam President, we've already started having those questions. I know that Dave Robert has had those discussions, and I've asked him for some information, because everybody is trying to figure out what is going to be allowed and what is not. The challenge, the difference between the school department and the town, as I understand the law, is they are only allowed to submit a budget that is 5.25% higher than last year. That same restriction is not on the municipal side. And I think in my conversations with the school department, and with the, privately and ones that you've had, this is going to take, they're going to take a hit, and it's going to be a reduction in school services. I know Mr. Amorantes, we have, the audit has been wrapped up, and we've already gotten preliminary information, and Mr. Amorantes, I believe, has a memo to you-
That's correct.
-in regards to what he thinks is going to be available to take from the budget, from the reserves this year. And, you know, I think that's going to need to be discussed at a later date, too, because-
The reason why I think a meeting is important, I think it's all well and good to have Mr. Robert, or you, or whatever, but I think, I think there's got to be sort of a meeting where everybody has some of the questions raised, because this is not a, this is a huge act, and it's going to either force communities into layoff situations, it's certainly going to force a reduced tax rate, which I think everybody will be thrilled by, but the agony to get there is going to be great. So I really do think this, just in reading the guidance, the act, the regulations, questions around it.
I'd suggest that we consider waiting or inquiring of Department of Administration when they're going to come out with their Dear Local Finance Officer letter, and again, they came out last year on March 30th, and I'm sure that the one that they're working on now is going to address these new exceptions and all the nuances of the amending legislation. I do want to say that the council president and I continue to work on reducing the debt service numbers for the next fiscal year, so I would respectfully suggest that it's a little premature now for us to go to municipal affairs with a request for a debt service waiver, when the number hopefully will continue to drop. And the last point is just to follow up on what Glenn said, that I do have a memo to the town council. I met with the auditors Friday and reviewed the final draft of our audit. The general fund unrestricted surplus, which I faxed to the council president, is 2,900,000, which is an increase of 600,000 over last year's 2,300,000. So I'm pleased to report we've had a substantial increase in the unrestricted general fund surplus, which I hope goes to debt service. But there is a memo that I left with the town clerk, and she'll get it to you in the budget committee. Thank you.
They all have it. It was distributed this evening.
Madam President, please. Mrs. Black and I went to the symposium that was sponsored by Chauv Fogarty back in September, where Theresa Piverweed, who was the author of the act, and several other speakers, were trying to convince the people in that room that day that this is going to be the best thing since sliced bread, and that we don't have to worry. They are going to supply us with the funds that we're going to need in order to finish up our budgets and to run our town. So we really don't have to worry. That's what we were told that day.
Easter bunny is coming.
Yep.
Followed by Santa Claus.
The last time we, the last time we discussed this, I brought, we've been talking about expenditures, and now there's the other side of the coin, which is income. We talked about state mandates, and you distributed a list of mandates dated December 31st, 192006, which the law says will be done by the Office of Municipal Affairs. They will issue that list every year, according to the rules that you gave us on January 1st. We are to review it and to respond to them no later than April 1st, which means we could possibly get some reimbursements for some of these mandates. Now, I noted that you sent a memo to all the departments, asking them to review it in an effort to give you back some information. Have you received the response of that memo as yet?
We've gotten, a couple of departments have come back, but I believe you also received a letter from Representative Loflin in regards to that question, that I believe that you asked at the meeting counselor, and, you know, is there money there? And as I recall, the letter said, no. There is no money to fund these unfunded mandates.
But I also read something which said that the General Assembly usually appropriates something like 3 or 3.5 million dollars for the reimbursements, and that not half of the cities and towns have ever applied for it, of which we were one.
Well, we, I mean, your question was followed up by Representative Loflin, and we've had the same conversation with municipal affairs, and they have basically said, you know, we take this report, it's good for us to know, and that's it. I mean, the issue, the problem that, what I'm discovering in my experience here is that there is no formal review or financial impact statement done when this legislation is passed. They pass it, but they don't understand the impacts of it.
Well, the instruction here says that when we respond on April the 1st, they put together a list, and they send it to the treasurer of the state for inclusion in the budget.
I, I agree.
Okay, but are you saying then that we will not respond on April 1st?
Well, we're going to respond, no, don't misunderstand. We're going to respond to let them know what their most recent regulations and the impact that they have had on the stamp.
He just anticipated. I'm out there willing to conduct the cake sale, if that's what's necessary, but I'd like to see revenues increased, you know, if at all possible.
Easter bunny.
Get him, too. He's due in a couple of months.
Okay, folks, that's going to be a continuing subject. Street Committee, recommendation on Shore Road. Mr. Webster.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, I'd like to make one little change, and that is, this is not a recommendation-
I didn't tell me.
Yeah, just, I'm going to recuse myself. Thank you.
Oh. Minutes or so left.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Webster.
This is not a recommendation by the street committee. This is more of an update of the meeting that was held last week, because the street committee did not have adequate time after hearing from both the surveyor, who did the work down there and presented a plan to the committee, as well as the attorney Rogero, Peter Rogero, on possible options for the committee to recommend to the council. But I did prepare the report, and I'm sure that you have a copy of it, stating that we have heard from both Mr. Nunes, who explained the process he went through to develop the plan, also we heard from Peter Rogero about the possible options. One, the thing, I guess, that we have to say right now is that the survey shows an 1893, 1893 layout of what was then called Three-Rod Way. That was shown on the plan, it's commonly known as Shore Road, but there were also on the same plan, there was shown the 1953 location of a shore road that was put together by, or created by a subdivision. The two of them do not match up. The 1893 layout is what was accepted by the town council. What that leaves us with are nine homes and 14 properties, either wholly or partially on the layout, on the town road layout. So we have a not-so-good situation down there, and there's, no matter which, what decision is made by the council, this is not going to be an easy decision. And it also should be noted that the situation of the homes and the properties in the town layout could affect the property owners down there, could cloud titles.
Thank you very much.
We wait for the alternance.
You got any good news for us tonight?
Yeah, we're moving ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Webster. I don't think you'd go away, do you?
No, I don't.
Stay right where you are.
Okay. Next item.
Next item is, I'm requesting the council permission to advertise for price proposals and statements of qualifications for the outfall identification and dry weather flow survey. This is part of the, what's known, referred to as Stormwater II program. We are required to have all of our stormwater outfalls in the urban area that's been identified as part of the, as subject to the program. We have to identify those, locate them by GPS, latitude, longitude. We also have to test the flow coming from those pipes, and that's going to be, that's what, that's part of what makes this a little bit undeterminable. We can't determine how many pipes are going to have flow coming out of them, and we have to do this testing twice, once during the wet season, once during the dry season. And we are required to do this this year before next December 31st, and that's why I'm asking for permission to go out for this. I did talk with town solicitor Andy Tights about this. We were going to try, I asked if we could perhaps extend a contract with a current consultant so that we didn't have to go through this process, but he felt that it was something separate from the other contracts we have for testing at the landfill. So that's why it's before you this evening.
A motion to authorize the DPW director to advertise for a price proposal, a statement of qualification for the outflow identification and dry weather flow survey.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, on the question, I take it this is a state mandate.
This is a federal mandate.
Federal mandate.
It's only, it's only that the EPA has delegated certain authorities to the state by issuing a general permit for the whole state, so the state is doing the oversight, but this is a federal mandate.
Unfunded, funded. Unfunded or funded? Are they going to... Unfunded, and those are the kind I like.
Is this in the budget for next year?
Yes, it is. It's in the budget for this year. We're in as well. We're going to be, part of it's going to be coming out of this year. We're going to do as much as we can this year, and then the remainder will have to be done next year. And if we find contaminants in that flow, that's when the rail fund starts identifying where, where the contamination's coming from, further testing in upstream of the, the outfall location.
Okay, motion is...
One question.
Yes, go ahead.
Assuming no contaminants, what do you expect as ballpark figure for this, this total testing?
I had a preliminary estimate of around $11,000. That did not include any of the testing.
There is $10,000 in this year's budget, $15,000 is budgeted, or in next year's budget.
All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webster. Mr. Administrator.
I'm asking for your approval for the low bid and the sole bid. We had only had two packages taken out. Mr. McKeo, who has been your long-term, long-service provider for 23 years, I don't think anybody wants to compete against him, has recommended, has submitted a bid price for $24,870 for municipal property, and that, I think, is a great price for the quality of work that he does. And I know the Recreation Commission speaks very highly of him, and I speak very highly of him, and he meets all the bid requirements.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion's been made, seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
And he's probably going to raise his price, because we made him sit here for two hours tonight to get approval for such a low bid.
It's nice to see his face.
Town Administrator, announcements, comments.
I would like a, for us to pick a workshop so we can talk about revenues. I know we had talked about doing it on the night of the 26th. I don't know what the agenda looks like, but if there's another night that week, would work, maybe the first Monday in March.
We might also combine that with something that I mentioned early on, is to have a, every council member sort of look their note, look their notes over and see what is out there that needs to be resolved, prepare a list, and then also a planning, sort of goal-setting session.
The first, first thing is to identify a night for a workshop, and then we'll set an agenda for the workshop.
Absolutely. So what's your suggestion, Mr. Boe?
If that first Monday in, in March is available, then I don't see...
First Monday in March.
The only, the only problem that I think it affects the solicitor, if you get into legal issues, I didn't think would it be that legal issues for the revenue items, but we're getting those resolved before we come to you with it. Am I not correct, first Monday nights are bad for you?
Sometimes they are. We'll also have to be discussing an executive session, the need for scheduling some nights for a hearing. So I think you need to be thinking about that when you start to do workshops as well.
Well, let's keep the March 5th.
I cannot do that particular.
Yeah, we may not, we may not, for goal-setting, we may not need your expertise and...
Actually, as I look at, I have two separate things already scheduled.
I, I think we can put those two items on that, on that evening for a workshop, the goals, goals and objectives for the following year and the budget item.
Okay.
I make a motion, we have a workshop on Monday, March 5th. I think it's about time we set them, rather than have them ran down our road.
All those in favor of Mr. Costa's motion, raise your right hand. March 5th it is.
I abstain. Mr. Costa?
Eighteen. At, at 7:00.
Seven o'clock.
Okay, gotcha.
That's right.
I actually do have a couple of items tonight.
Send us the final page.
One is a litigation, one is a litigation matter that has been public, so I can just, just reiterate, I think as everybody is aware now, the, the Supreme Court has ruled in our favor in the case of Ned versus Noel Berg, and as far as dismissing the writ of Mandamus. And that was followed last week by a very short letter delivered to the zoning board withdrawing their appeal before the zoning board. So the application of New England Development Company is officially and completely dead.
Should we have a funeral?
Well, which, which brings us to the, the next point that I wanted to, I think has been on the minds of several people. This thought occurred simultaneously. I've talked to Mr. Berg and talking to the council president and the town administrator. This, this land is not zoned in conformance with the comprehensive plan, even before your latest amendments to the comprehensive plan. And seeing as how there was a pending application and it was subject to litigation, it didn't seem to make sense to do that. Now that there isn't any pending application, although there still remains pending litigation from the landowner, it would seem appropriate to try to bring the zoning of this land in conformance with the comprehensive plan. And it's my understanding that the planning board will be taking it up, and I, I think we would probably be looking to, you know, get a formal recommendation with the planning board and schedule a public hearing with notice advertising the works over the next month or two. We'll need the three weeks in advertising and a math and all that, but I think that process should begin, and I think the planning board's already beginning. So I'm not asking the council to take any action at this time.
Well, should the council take an action making a formal request of the planning board to provide a written statement on, can we do it in general, of saying the general zoning changes for, for an update to the, with the comprehensive plan? I mean, I think we should include it in whatever zoning changes should be appropriate because of the enact, the action taken to approve the comp plan.
Well, I certainly think it's, would be appropriate for the council to request the planning board to look at the zoning and the consistency of the zoning with the comprehensive plan without providing any speci, I don't think it would be appropriate at this point to provide any specific direction.
No, I mean, that's what I'm saying. I would like to do that in terms of look at the comprehensive zoning because of the acceptance of the comprehensive community plan and see what changes may need to be, and make a report back to the council.
Motion?
That's in form of motion.
Second, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand.
Two more items. One is Roger Williams University School of Law is in the process of forming a mediation program. Bruce Cogan, who is, well, he, I'm not sure if he is or just was an assistant, assistant dean there, is forming it. He also has a lot of personal experience, he sits on the zoning board in Bristol, and he is setting up this mediation program, and he is, in fact, looking for community disputes that might be susceptible to mediation. And, and we seem to have several here that might be suitable, including the gentleman who lives in Fall River but gets to his property through Tiverton, the Shore Road dispute. These things might be amenable to some mediation. So what, what I would like, with your permission, is to schedule with the clerk to invite Mr. Dean Cogan to come here and address the council with his, the details of his program, if that would be appropriate.
We could keep him quite busy.
Would this ultimately result in employing the university to mediate?
This is a pro bono program they do. It's, it's an educational program.
Why don't we have more of those?
You, you don't really need him to come talk to you, just want to, want to go for it, right?
Dump him a pillow. Spend some time.
The third item also, actually, that's it. That's, that's the only item I had.
Okay, I, before we take appropriate motions to go into executive session, I do think that the council should go on record and thank the attorneys that were involved in the Ned case, Mr. Rogero, in your firm, and Jeanne Scott, for a job well done. Anytime you can take a case of that type and take it all the way through the court proceedings and persevere and win, some notification and clapping and applause should be made. So I think on behalf of the council, we will state that for the record. Both. Okay, it's now time to go into executive session.
Motion to enter into executive session under 42465A5, possible acquisition or disposition of real estate.
Is there a second to that motion? All those in favor, raise your right hand.
And to remain in executive session under 42465A5, acquisition or disposition of town-owned property.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand.
And to further continue, under 42465A1, discussion of personnel, police chief notice sent.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand.
Again, to further remain under 42465A2, collective bargaining, the police IBPO.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand.
And one more item under 42465A2, litigation.
All those, all those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. We are in executive session.